Government Code. I call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 6:05 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome again, and thank you for joining us. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Gonzalez to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Juror lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República que representa, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. De honro bandera de Texas, te juro lealtad Texas, un estado bajo Dios, uno e indivisible.
We now move to public testimony for the action items on tonight's agenda: approval of Lone Star Governance and approval of TEA Special Education Proposed Agreed Order. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have one person who signed up to speak in person, and we have 10 who left a recorded message. So, we'll now move to in-person testimony. Each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions are yielding of time, which is not applicable tonight. So, we will begin with our one in-person speaker tonight, Ken Zeripis.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Segura, my name is Ken Zeripis, President of Education Austin. You know, over the years, a lot has happened with previous administrations to sow the seeds of distrust with parents and teachers, and particularly in the world of special ed. And it's been so difficult to deal with. We find ourselves tonight in having to take a decision and to agree to a proposal that nobody wants, but that we have to move forward for. I have to say that, at any moment in the 25 years I've been in the district, if there is one board, if there is one administration that has sown seeds of trust, it is this board and it is this administration. There's a long way to go. Kids need better support. Teachers need more support. Families need more support. And it's on us, all of us, to see that that happens. And we're here to support you to achieve those goals so that our kids and their families finally get the support they need in special ed, in AISD. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now play recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Yes, this is Kathleen Capobianco at Travis Early College High School, where I have worked for 14 years. 12 years at Burnett Middle School before that, 3 years at Austin High, 3 students, 3 of my own children through the district. I do not like what I am seeing in AISD. There is an element, a climate of bullying teachers, particularly at my high school with this new principal. But I'm really calling because I am horrified at the thought of TEA taking over this school system. I pay $22,000 in property taxes, and I don't want to be bullied by TEA and their conservative mega agenda. It is sickening. I will do everything I can to inform my neighbors, everybody, of what is going on in this district. It has turned into a corporate beast. You treat teachers terribly. Travis High School is a mess. This new principal is an ill fit, a very bad fit. She needs to go.
Freshman in high school. And I want transparency about the ARD Committee Manager Training, understanding what that looks like for administrators, and if parents can see it and take it. I've had to pay for an advocate to come to every ARD meeting for the past seven years because the administration in the ARD didn't understand what the laws were, how to write an IEP goal, how to implement it. So, I'm wondering, I'm very curious about the ARD Committee Manager Training. Can that be transparent? Can we see what administrative is being trained on? And maybe that will bridge the gap, yeah, so that we don't have to pay for someone to come in and teach AISD administrators what the laws are. Thanks so much.
I would like to strongly urge the Board of Trustees to reject the negotiated proposal from TEA. I'm a teacher at Austin High School, and I think we should reserve our right to appeal and reject the negotiated proposal from TEA. Thank you for your time.
Ryan Dufren, teacher in Austin ISD. The reason AISD is in this current SPED situation with TEA is 100% due to the failures and shortcomings of AISD for not ensuring SPED evaluations are done within the legal timeline. If it came down to staffing issues, then maybe the district should look at how best to recruit and retain employees through competitive compensation and benefits that match cost of living in Travis County. How the district and TEA are passing the responsibility down to every teacher across the district is absurd and a slap in the face. Requiring 17 hours of additional training to make up for your mistakes while teachers are already maxed out with planning, prep, conferences, ARDs, other trainings, et cetera, is beyond insulting. Devaluation failures have nothing to do with what goes on inside the classroom, and maybe if those in charge of education made the effort to listen to those who are on the front lines of education and act accordingly, you would most likely have not gotten us into this mess in the first place. Want to fix the SPED issue? Ask an experienced SPED teacher. Want to learn how to recruit and retain good teachers? Ask one of the few experienced teachers who have stayed in the profession. People who haven't set foot in the classroom since they graduated shouldn't be leading the way. Teachers should be. Listen to teachers.
Hi, this is Ally Divini, proud life skills special education teacher from Jocelyn Elementary. I spend my day advocating for my beautiful learners. I would like to take a moment to advocate for our special education staff. Yes, there are always places to grow and learn. That is what education is all about. We as teachers put benchmarks in our IEPs to help guide us to our goals. That is what we need, and I feel are doing as a district. Just like our students require time to make gains, reach their goals and potential, we need the same. We have strong teachers that we can utilize to help support those that need more ideas, actions, and modeling to give our students the quality education they deserve and can access here in AISD. We as a community of not just educators but learners know that our kids deserve the best, and I believe that we can look within for our best to help guide all teachers to reach each student. From our instructional coaches, special coordinators, to our behavior support specialists, department chairs, applied learning specialists, and the endless work that our compliance team does on the district level, we are on the path through modeling to reach the potential where all children in AISD have what they need to be successful in life. I ask the Board and the TEA to support our special education teachers as they work tirelessly on writing quality goals and IEPs to clear the backlogs, close the gaps in learning differences, and provide underserved children as together we strive to help all learners and see what is special in each and every AISD student.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Claflin. I'm a teacher in AISD. I just wanted to, I guess, voice my opinion. I don't think we should be part of TEA or TEA part of us. I don't think you guys should take any sort of deal from them. We are an independent school district for a reason, and it needs to stay that way, in my opinion. So, anyways, that was my two cents. So, thank you for listening. Bye.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Isela. Tengo un niño en educación especial y agradezco mucho que se hayan tomado el tiempo de darle la importancia a lo que es educación especial. Mi sugerencia, si están siendo rápidas las evaluaciones porque mi niño está en proceso de evaluación, pero también me gustaría que le dieran importancia a lo que es el IEP en las escuelas, en el que se aseguran de que se está trabajando adecuadamente en eso en los niños, en el personal en el que está involucrado con los niños de educación especial. Muchísimas gracias y espero que tomen en cuenta eso. Y gracias por todo el esfuerzo que están haciendo de poner más maestros y poner más personal para niños de educación especial. Gracias.
This is an English interpretation of Isela Magdalena's message. Good afternoon, my name is Isela. I have a child in special education, and I appreciate very much that you have taken the time to give the importance to special education. My suggestion, and you are doing interviews quickly because my child is in the evaluation process, but I would also like you to give importance to the IEP in the schools and that you make sure that you are working properly with the children and that the staff are engaging with children in special education. Thank you very much, and I hope you take that into consideration. And thank you for all your efforts in hiring more teachers and more staff for our children in special education. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Yo soy Belén Fuentes, soy de la escuela padrón. Tengo un hijo con autismo y ADHD. Mi experiencia es que pienso que mi hijo necesitaba más recursos el año pasado y pienso que los niños de autismo necesitamos más recursos y más ayuda porque en veces no hay maestros, no hay especialistas, y hasta ahorita gracias a este año que pusieron unos buenos maestros de padrón, de educación especial, y terapeutas que han estado conmigo, me han apoyado con mi hijo y pensamos aumentar más las clases. Pero yo pienso que necesitamos más ayuda para niños con autismo porque no solamente está mi hijo, sino hay más que necesitan más ayuda en las escuelas como padrón. Ahora está dando unas ayudas, pero faltan más ayudas porque hay más madres que quisieran meter a sus hijos en padrón, pero no tienen los recursos porque sus hijos están muy atrasados y no hay maestros especializados para diferentes tipos de autismo.
This is an English interpretation of Belén Fuentes's message. Hello, good afternoon. I am Belén Fuentes. I am from padrón school. I have a son with autism, and my experience says that I think that my son needs, he needed more resources last year, and I think that a child with autism needs more resources, more help. And there are no teachers, there are no specialists, and until now, thanks to this year, they put some good teachers in padrón for special education and therapists that have been with me and have supported my son. And we think that we need to increase more classes, but I think we need more help for children with autism because it is not only my son, but there are more that need more help with the schools. As parents, we are getting more help, but we need even more help because there are parents who would like to send their children to padrón, but they don't have resources.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Ramirez. I am a parent to 2 students in AISD, as well as an employee in the Special Education Department at AISD, as well as a proud Education Austin member. I am calling to urge the Board to vote for the proposal that TEA has most recently submitted. I have called in the past with a different stance, but looking at it more closely, I believe immediate conservatorship is a detriment to the district and will only lead to a takeover by TEA. I think the proposal that they have submitted is the best of 2 not great options. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Fitz. I'm a parent of an elementary-age child in special education in the Austin Independent School District, and I am trained as a physician. Firstly, I'd like to clarify the context of what we're talking about. General education is intended to nurture the childhood development of kids, and special education administers support to children with developmental differences with same-age peers. So, my first grievance is that this order doesn't address that the Director of Special Education should have administrative capabilities, a PhD in education, or psychology, ethical experience in childhood development, such that they can make appropriate and effective decisions for children with developmental issues. We don't need TEA to take over. We need an effective director of STEM who has the right education and experience and with the appropriate budget to deliver on their position. It's an incredibly complicated position. It's like harder than being a hospital administrator. So, in addition to ignoring the real issues at hand, my grievance number 2 is that we are provided with a dramatic smokescreen that is about removing local government and replacing it with statewide governance.
Yeah.
All right. Well, this concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Nope. Okay. Oh, yes, Trustee Hunter.
I have, oops, try that again. I have a question. Caller number 4 mentioned some training. Can you help us understand what that required training is about?
Yes, I can start off, and if Dr. Robinette wants to come up. So, as part of the, in Appendix A of the agreed or proposed order, there is a requirement for professional development, and it is required for all campus-based staff. And so, upon reviewing the initial document that was submitted to AISD, we began to develop a plan, and there are multiple modules included in what's recommended from TEA, and once you add all those up, it does become a significant number of time to be spent. Dr. Robinette and her team, along with our professional development department, have been looking at ways to tighten that up. When we met with TEA, one of the things that we discussed was identifying within the modules kind of what could be collapsed and incorporated into one, so we do have a better way to not only track it, but also ensure that the elements that are of most importance are provided to our staff. The other thing I would say is, we also developed a plan that considers those current employees of AISD, but also any future employees, and what the onboarding process might look like so that it incorporates professional development opportunities. So, I don't know if Dr. Robinette has anything else you'd like to add to that, but that's what the caller is referring to. Trustee Hunter.
Thank you, interim Superintendent Segura. Trustee Hunter, was, I didn't number my responses, I apologize for that. Are you referring to the caller who specifically asked about the ARD Committee Management Training?
No.
Just in general?
It was the caller who asked about the part of the agreement that talks about the 17 hours and just kind of how, because when you see that number, you think, this is going to take the next four hours, you know, four days of my life or whatever. Like, the superintendent did a great job of kind of talking about what you guys had planned, and I just, I think our community needs to know that you're thinking about that planning and like, what that's going to look like.
Absolutely, and we'll have additional information linked for you all in a board update that was likewise provided to our staff members, sort of proactively in anticipation, given the limited number of days that we have in our fall for professional learning days. The calendar already being developed, as interim Superintendent Segura mentioned. But since I have the mic for a moment, any of those trainings that are in the proposed agreed order are linked for the public to view. Those are linked for folks, including that ARD Committee Management Training or other pieces. There are caveats because of the timeframes required by the agency that indicate in the proposed agreed order that if there are existing trainings or other pieces that we feel would satisfy the requirements, we have to submit those for review to the agency, and then we can transparently provide that in some way for folks to be able to access as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Trustees, any other questions? Okay, thank you. So, as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Before we move to our 2 action items tonight, the trustees will convene to executive session to discuss legal implications of the new proposed order provided by TEA. We will return shortly to consider action on these items. So, we will be as quick as we can be, and I apologize, we've been doing this a lot lately. I promise it's not going to be a regular thing, but just as the information is, things are happening very quickly, and legally as a board, we can't talk to each other on the phone about stuff in between meetings as a board, so we have to do it during our meeting time. So, apologies in advance. I promise you, it's for a good reason, and we'll be as quick as possible. So, we will now recess the open meeting at 6:25 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. So, thank you very much. Thank you all for your patience. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 7:54 PM. Before we move to our action items, we want to share that the originally scheduled board work session to discuss meeting efficiencies will be rescheduled for later and will not be held tonight. We will provide more information on this when it has been rescheduled. But we will now move to the action items on tonight's agenda. We only have 2 items tonight over the Texas Education Agency's Special Investigation into AISD's Special Investigation into AISD Special Education. Last night, Austin ISD received a final negotiated proposal, which we have uploaded into Board Docs and is the item we will consider tonight. We will take up that item first, which is 4.2. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve item 4.2, Approval of TEA Special Education Proposed Agreed Order.
Is there a second? Beckett? Okay, thank you. So, we have a, we have a motion from Secretary Boswell and a second from Trustee Zapata, who is on Zoom, to approve item 4.2. Trustees, are there any questions or comments or discussion? Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. We spent a lot of time, let me see for myself, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and, excuse me, making a decision that would be the best thing for our district, and that's been really hard. Most of you know I've been a teacher, a parent advocate. I have a child too, went through special education services, received special education services in Austin ISD, and dealt with some of the things that we're, now, our district has not been successful in. It is different sitting here than it was sitting there as an advocate and as a parent. And the only, I know there's a lot of people that still have some misunderstandings, and there are some people who completely understand and are still struggling with the 2 choices that are before us. I think tonight about an Indian fable about 6 blind men who are put near an elephant, and they all feel the elephant, and they know what they know because they've touched that elephant, they've imagined what it must look like. And one of the men says, "They're like a wall. I felt the side of it. It's much like a wall." And the other man says, "That can't be because I felt it, and it felt more like a spear," just feeling the tusk. Another says, "I felt the ear. It's more like a fan. So, I know what this is like, and I know for our community that you see it from the perspective of a parent, a perspective from a teacher, a perspective as a student receiving those services, or the lack thereof." What I can tell you, sitting in this seat, is that I have to look at it from all of those. I have been a teacher, I have been a parent, I am now a board member. And so, though you may not see it from my perspective, understand that my vote is based on the whole elephant, to continue the analogy. And so, any decision that I am making, I make because I truly believe that this is our way through. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter. Any other comments? Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you, President Singh, and thank you, Trustee Hunter, for your comments. I too have weighed and have considered, and I've listened, and I've read as deeply and as widely as I could in order to inform the decision that we're here to make tonight. I understand the gravity of the errors and the frustrations that have brought us here today, in part because, like Trustee Hunter, although differently, I have seen them and I have lived them as a teacher in this district. And I also understand and think it is important to acknowledge that those errors are, should be owned by all of the parties that are responsible for them, and I think that includes the agency. Furthermore, while I and many others who are here in this room work in the service of our students and the families as representative of this district, I also know that we are not directly responsible for the mistakes of our collective past, but we are here, we are on this dais, we are in the positions that we have, and we are responsible for mending the trust that has clearly been broken and in correcting the transitions that have occurred. I, as well as some of the other members of this board, are new, but even though we are new, I would hope that our actions thus far as a board and our actions as individuals before we became members of the board have helped to rebuild some of that trust with our community. And I want to believe that we, along with this administration, are capable of meeting the vast requirements that are before us. I do not believe personally that either of the options that we have tonight are perfect. They are far from it. And in deliberating these options, I have shared many of the concerns that have been raised by members of our community tonight and before. And it is my hope that whatever we choose to do as a body for this district, that we will not allow ourselves to be inhibited by doing, from doing, what we know to be best for our children. But instead, that we will continue to work with our families, work with our teachers, and work with this administration to fundamentally change outcomes for students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Any other trustees have comments? Trustee Whitley Chu?
So, in the summer of 2022, I was shocked to hear our previous superintendent announce that the Austin ISD Special Education backlog was no more. I personally knew that was not true because I had requested a special education evaluation for my then-four-year-old daughter in October of 2021 that was still not complete. I ran for this office to ensure that all the children in our community are afforded their fundamental right to a free and appropriate public education. And a timely evaluation is the first of many, many, many steps, but the first critical steps to early intervention for our most vulnerable students. Upon taking office in December 2022, the new board that sits before you hired Superintendent Matia Segura because of his unmatched systematic and structural problem-solving skills and mind and his deep commitment and heart for providing all AISD kids with the educational opportunities that they deserve. And we've made great progress, and we still have great work to do, and we will not stop until all students are served. So, in March, TEA recommended a team of conservators to manage Austin ISD. We asked for an informal review and a monitor. As we've seen in my own hometown of Houston and my extended family's hometown of Marlin, a conservator appointed for a narrow reason to a school district has broad authority to direct districts. has broad authority to direct district staff to overturn decisions of the Board of Trustees and starts the clock on a path to a complete board takeover in two years. So I've spent this month conferring with our own legal counsel, other legal experts, educational experts, and our community. And these experts have advised that rejecting a conservator gives Austin ISD the best possible chance to continue with our progress. Public schools governed by elected school boards that accept and retain all students are essential to our democracy. We must preserve, we must preserve this. We must exist and we must fulfill the promise to provide every student with the opportunity to achieve their full potential.
Thank you. Other trustees? Trustee Boswell?
We're deciding between two options tonight. Accepting TA sanctions by force or by choice. It's important to note that we are in this position because the district has failed students. Specifically, the district has failed students who needed and were entitled to special education services, not only evaluations, but also supports to help them succeed in our schools. The administration has given me confidence that the four-part plan laid out in the proposed agreement with TA to address open corrective actions, improve data management, strengthen skills through training, and deepen family engagement is thoughtfully designed not only to bring us into compliance, but also to create a strong foundation for offering special education services in alignment with our community's values and our students' needs. We owe that to our students. We want that for our students. We are committed to making that happen for our students. And we have chosen an interim superintendent who is beginning to do that for our students by leading with head and heart. But we are also in this position as the result of many years of choices made by the people who lead our state. I have no doubt that each and every person who serves on this board is here because we know great things are possible for Austin ISD's students on every campus in our district, regardless of background, zip code, or academic need. We are here because we know our students have not always been served, because families have not always been heard, because educators have not always been honored as experts, not only in their professions, but also what is happening in our campuses and our classrooms. Each of you brings something strong and smart and fierce to this board. You are kind, hardworking, connected, empathetic. Together, we are capable of great things. I'm honored to serve with you, to learn from you, and lead this district with you. And I am grateful and glad for the progress our team of ten has led together since December in special education, staffing, budgeting, work on the 2022 bond, and so many other areas. We are nine trustees among thousands across our state. Together, we serve and support more than 5 million students in Texas public schools. We serve those students in a state that has worked steadily to increase the Texas government's ability to impose sanctions on schools and to remove districts' access to meaningful appeals. Increasingly, those sanctions include requirements that limit the powers granted to boards by the Texas Education Code and each district's voters. Increasingly, they include expectations to elevate a focus on test scores at the expense of discussing other issues like teacher retention, mental health, student safety, and equitable access to the rich mix of opportunities our district offers. Those stronger sanctions have not come with stronger support for our schools. Texas is a state with great economic abundance, yet far too little of that abundance reaches the students in our schools. Texas ranks near the bottom in per-student funding. We spend about $4,000 less per student than the national average. Pay for teachers laggs even farther behind. Each year, Texas districts spend more than $2 billion more on special education services than the funds they receive for that from the state. That gap in Austin ISD this year is more than $82 million. We cannot sanction our way to excellence for the students of Austin ISD or the students of Texas. Our children deserve better. Our children deserve more. I've considered our options from every angle. It feels like I have done little else in the past few weeks. I appreciate the counsel of legal experts and the input of the families, educators, and community members who are experts in what happens in our district. Between two hard options, I believe voting to accept a monitor is the option that best allows the district's good work to continue, offers the most room for maintaining local control and our community's values, and ultimately best ensures our continued work toward great things for our district's children.
Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Other trustees? Vice President Foster?
Lot of speech if I am tonight. As this is, you know, one of those big decisions and something that's weighed on us for a long time. And for me, part of what's been just intellectually jarring is the irony of this. We are spending so much time on adult behaviors and how adults should behave when the call of the training that we are being ordered, pushed, cajoled into taking is that we should focus on student outcomes. And for many of us, I think for most of us, that's really what we like to spend our time on. And yet here we are, spending our time, being compelled to spend our time on this adult stuff. But I'll say that this is the best board I've been a part of in my career. It's diverse. It's thoughtful. It's deliberate. It's caring. It's collegial. It has really been a pleasure. And we are far from perfect. And each of us has our challenges that we bring to bear. But each of us has, at least my trust, my colleagues just have amazing superpowers that I could literally go down and name what each person brings to the table. And what we do with that, or at least what we attempt with all of our might to do with that, is to bring that together into thoughtful decision-making. And I feel like we've actually done a good job. And I'm proud, even though this is not easy. I'm proud to work with y'all. The greatest linchpin moment, I think, is that we've hired the strongest superintendent I've ever had the pleasure to work with. Our choice, if people remember, absolutely went against the grain of standard expectations. And it was not an easy internal conversation to get to the point where we reached consensus. But how did we reach consensus? Through thoughtful, deliberate conversation. None of that would have counted towards student outcomes as we are encouraged to think of them. A paradox I can't reconcile. Good decisions lead to student outcomes. That was a good decision. And I'm really pleased to have you, Superintendent Segura. In the time since Superintendent Segura was hired on January 1st, 2023, the district has made dramatic measurable improvements in this critical area of special education. We have seen a 52% drop in pending evaluations. In my time on the board up to that point, folks had been working so hard, tearfully hard. And yet we didn't have the skills brought to bear to get us from working hard to working smart. And a corner has been turned where specific planning, so take for instance, developing a strategy to attract LSPs, LSSPs and diagnosticians that was well thought out, that was effective, that, you know, it was stipends, it was training, it was more teachers in different areas, leading us from 22 to, I think, 76. So what, tripling in the number of folks on hand for evaluation. So that in the last six months, we see this dramatic drop. This was something that happened systematically over time as a result of the superintendent's leadership and the already-present hard work of those that were currently on staff and the hiring of new people. It's been a step-by-step, slow process. So honored to see the work of our special education team, those at all levels of the district. But again, this has taken place in the context of thoughtful, deliberate work that I more than perceive to be directly under threat with the new framework we're being invited to go into. The proposed agreement covers two major areas, as I understand the document. One is special ed monitoring and training. And I just can't see how we are absolutely in, a monitor just makes sense to me. It just makes sense. We have been in a bad place for a long, long time. And the state coming in and being thoughtful to say, "A monitor is what's appropriate", it makes sense to me. Moreover, in watching our leadership, our board president, Artie Singh, our superintendent, Segura, in conversation with the Texas Education Agency, I've seen indications of the state's interest in our doing well. And I appreciate that and want to lift that up and acknowledge that because when I think of how much money they take from us each year and when I think of all the things I don't like about how our state operates, I also feel it's important to acknowledge and lift up and indeed even celebrate when I see evidence of the state showing care for our kids and showing care for our district. So in the past weeks, as the state took a good look at where we were and said, "Actually, the backlog's coming down. Actually, good systems are in place. It seems like a conservator over special ed might not be right. Let's back this to a monitor. Let's make further sort of negotiated moves." I've appreciated that. But the proposed agreement doesn't stop there. The proposed agreement also goes deep into governance. And now we're getting deep into a philosophical problem where, you know, we could go to Jefferson, and it goes well before Jefferson, where they talk about the government that govern best is the government that governs least. You could go to folks who talk about the need for local autonomy. You can talk about those who would say, if you were to quote Ronald Reagan, "The most terrifying nine words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.'" I honor the work of the local. I think the work of the local is where the solutions come. And if we were to look to the state, I would want the state to do something like provide us with resources. But instead, our relationship to the state is, has a lot to do with how much we give to the state and then how much we are ruled by the state in terms of them stepping deeper and deeper into our kitchen. So monitoring would be fine if that's where the agreement stopped. But the agreement, for me, crosses a sort of threshold into a matter of the erosion of local control. That is a local matter, but it's a local matter with national implications because it's happening all over the nation where folks don't like school boards. And when I say folk, I'm not talking about everyday folk that voted us into office. I'm talking about folks who are operating in narrow, elite laws at the halls at the state and federal levels. I think they want to legislate us out of existence or they want to rule us out of existence or they want to in different ways just do everything they can to curtail our powers. I don't believe that things are going to get better for black kids that way. I don't think things are going to get better for children with disabilities, for newcomers, for immigrant students, for the range of kids that we serve. They're not going to get better because the state or federal levels tells us how to do our work. They can tell us by the laws of the U.S. Constitution, by the laws of the state, by the federal government, what we need to do, but how to do it should be left to us. So I may be just one, but I cannot go along with this proposed agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Foster. Trustee Kaufman?
So my thoughts aren't quite as organized as I'd like them to be, but I would like to just thank all my colleagues for their thoughtful reflections on this important decision and all of the, you know, recognize all the time and effort that has gone in for, I think, each of us to understand what is before us, to gather input and feedback from our constituents and from our community and to really reckon with a very important decision. So I appreciate. I want to echo the esteem I have for all my colleagues on this dais and all the people I get to work with in this district, both families and all the thoughtfulness that has come into this from staff, from employees, from the community members, but especially with the 10 people, the 10 of us. I have complete confidence in my eight board colleagues and my superintendent to make the decision for the right reason, whatever the decision is. And so whether we do or do not have a consensus vote on this or unanimous vote, it doesn't take away from the fact that I am 100% confident that the decision, that people's choices were made for the right reasons with the appropriate amount of thoughtfulness. I just want to note a few things that I may or may choose, may not choose to pose as questions. That there is a difference between the Board of Managers, which is what Houston is experiencing, and the Conservator or Management Team, which is what was recommended to the TA Commissioner back on March 31st, and the Monitor or Team, right, who is what is part of this proposed agreement. And that those are three very different pieces. And that a lot of this decision comes down to where do we best get results for kids with that? And where do we best retain the, you know, authority as a board to represent our community? I do think there was some misunderstanding around the Management Team being what is happening in Houston right now, and it's not. A Management Team means more than one conservator, but it's still the same set of responsibilities. I do want to echo, I think, what I, Trustee Foster said, that the order from March 31st does talk about, it does, there are no findings about governance in that report. So the investigation that took place focused on the evaluations and the services and whether students' individualized education plans were being implemented effectively. There were no findings in their own governance. So I am curious, right, about what the basis is for the governance expectations when there have been no findings or investigation of that. So I do think that this is based on some assumptions that may not be true. I do think this is based on perhaps some past performance that is not representative of this board. And I do think this is perhaps based more on the general reputation that school boards have for focusing on personal gain, focusing on nepotism, focusing on contracts with your friends, focusing on the football team, focusing on things that aren't in the classroom. And I did superintendent training and I saw colleagues from other districts whose presentations in our mock practices were about those things. Not the nepotism, but about the football team and how cool this district is with no mention of student achievement, right? So I get it. I get that there are boards that find it a challenge to focus on kids. That is not a challenge for this board. We are focused on kids and we plan to remain focused on kids regardless of this. So I do think, you know, I have similar questions to Trustee Foster about where the basis is for the expectations regarding governance. But I am all in for whatever decision is going to best result in serving our children effectively and allowing our board to continue to represent the values and the beliefs of this school district and this community. So that's the line I have to figure out how to get to. How do we embrace the accountability and expectations for serving our kids the way that they should be served and not just about evaluations, but also in the classroom, making sure that we have inclusive spaces where kids are being served to achieve their maximum potential? Because you can comply with all things in the law without effectively serving kids. And we can get out of this mess without actually improving outcomes for kids. So I do think within whatever decision we make tonight, this board is going to remain committed and this superintendent and our staff and families are going to find a path towards actually getting outcomes for kids, not just getting out of this mess. And so again, with or without TA, that's something this board is going to do. And so again, with or without T A, that's something this board is going to do. So I do want to note again, the bigger context of this, some of which again trustee Foster alluded to. Um, one thing that I've learned, um, and was re-minded of, um, a few months ago when we visited Washington DC was that the IDEA, which was a very ambitious law meant to actually make sure that the needs of all students are being served. And it set expectations that are marvelous expectations for making sure that we're differentiating and individualizing education for kids. Idea was initially passed by Congress with an kind of a commitment to providing for 40% of that funding from the federal level to meet the needs of kids. And what it is currently funded at is under 13%. So there are billions of dollars that are not being spent by the federal government to provide that support to states to meet the needs of children. And then within our, our state, we know that there is a federal, a special education allotment that comes to the district and that allotment is a fraction of what AISD is currently choosing to invest in meeting the needs of our students. And so there's like a big disconnect financially and money doesn't solve everything, but again, I challenge anyone who says that money doesn't matter to try to run a school district without money, right? Because, um, they're big priorities. So I just want to put that in the bigger context. There are other battles that we need to fight around making sure that our children's needs are being met, not just in Austin, because Austin is in this situation because we have, um, we made mistakes, right? Clearly. And we have some systemic issues that have to be fixed, but we're also, but so do other districts. We are in this situation also because I'm very grateful for the 80 complaints that went to T A that triggered this because we have savvy parents and we have advocates, people who understand our children's needs aren't being met and they understood the pathway they could follow to file a complaint to T A. And I'm grateful that that happened because that has put a spotlight on this that needs to be done. But I do think there's also a bigger question of is our services and evaluations being monitored systematically in our state to ensure that these needs are being met for all kids around the state, not just in districts where parents utilize the resources available to them to, to file complaints. Um, so this was a complaint-driven process, not a, let's have a strong system for ensuring that all these things are happening in every district, right? And I suspect that there isn't the capacity for the state to do that. That's a huge job. And yet it's important. So that, that, that's just another context, I think, to understand. So I will go back again to say, um, I 100% agree with anything and everything that will help us to provide for the services that our students deserve and need to be successful at the highest possible rate that they can. I want to go beyond that and make sure that we are not just meeting the letter of the law, but we're actually following the spirit of the law and getting the results from that law so that our kids are getting what they truly need. I want to address the appeal piece because that was a sticking point for a while. And in this proposed agreement, we are agreeing that if certain measures are not met, that they're, that the commissioner can appoint a conservator or a team. And at that point, we would not be able to, to exercise our appeal for that process. But I just want to really clear what that means to me and what that means in my understanding of that is if we were to appeal the decision to place a conservator here, which was the recommendation back in March, if we were to appeal that, we would have to first of all prove that these things didn't happen. And I do not want our lawyers to spend their time trying to convince someone that the parents' complaints that governed, that led to this weren't real. We have to embrace the fact that those complaints were real and that we have to solve this problem. So I do not want to pay one dime for our lawyers to go to T A and try to argue that this isn't a problem. So that would be one thing. The other part of the appeal would be having to say that the commissioner doesn't have authority to do these things and the commissioner very clearly has authority to do what he's said to do with these. Our elected officials in the Texas Legislature has given the T A Commissioner, which, um, is a political appointee, broad power and authority under Title II, Chapter H, Subchapter, um, Chapter 39A of the Texas Education Code to impose, impose intervention and sanctions for school districts. This power includes the power to appoint a board of managers to exercise the powers and duties of a school board's, uh, school district's Board of Trustees. The superintendent, the commissioner has the authority to replace the school board, period. That's part of the authority, uh, which essentially overrules the vote of local communities to, who elect their school board. The legislature has given the T A Commissioner the authority to appoint a conservator or a management team. And part of, in the statute, it says that they can, quote, "direct an action" or they can approve or disapprove the action of the principal of a campus, the superintendent of the district, or the Board of Trustees of the district. So they have the authority to place a conservator who can tell us what to do, who can tell the superintendent what to do, who can tell a school principal what to do. So that authority exists. If we don't like that that authority exists, if, if we feel that that authority isn't actually an effective way to get improvements, then our legislature needs to change that. But as it is, that's the law of the land. And so we're not in a position where we can appeal and say, no, the commissioner does not have the right to do that. So I don't feel we're giving up anything by giving up our right to appeal because we are currently in a situation where the commissioner could put a conservator here anyhow without a, a appeal that will be successful. So I, that's, I just need to explain that piece because I think that's a really important part of this. So, um, just in concluding my speechifying, um, I want to say that again, I will support anything and everything we can do to achieve outcomes for our kids and I will welcome any and all help and support that we can to get there. And when it comes to some of the governance pieces, um, I'm going to adopt kind of what, what our teachers are going to have to adopt, which is the attitude of we're going to have to do some things that we don't fully agree with doing, but we're going, I'm going to take what I can learn from them and do the best we can to take what is helpful and make it work and to tolerate the parts that aren't that helpful. Because that's what, exactly what we're asking our teachers to do right now is to undergo and do some training, some of which they will find helpful and some of which they won't find helpful. But overall, we're going to have to use this experience to like better our outcomes for kids. And so if we can shorten our meetings, if we can empower our superintendent to do his best work and to empower his team to get this job done, if we can reduce some of the policy red tape pieces that get in the way of some of this work, I'm all in for that. All right? So it's going to be up to us to make lemonade out of the lemons and to accept the help where we can to get this worked on.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman. Yes, trustee Lugo.
Hi, thank you. So there are just four things I wanted to mention. One is, um, back in 2019, I think it was October, um, I was a parent sitting over there and there were a group of LSSPs, so licensed, um, specialist in school psychology, for those who don't have the acronym memorized. And, um, they're, they were wearing red. I'm looking out into the audience because, um, the education Austin, uh, president is here. And, um, I remember that they were pleading with the district, um, at that time. And I think about what my colleagues have already said, right? Adult behaviors and y'all heard me talk about that last time and I'm sure I'll find a way to squeeze it in in the future. When I was at that meeting, I felt, you know, whether this is true or not, but my perception of the situation was that, um, decision makers at that time saw those professionals in red shirts and believed that they were just here to talk about adult issues. But ultimately, they were talking about student outcomes. And I've learned so much serving on this board, um, my first two years, and I feel really honored to be serving with this board right now during the last two years of my first four-year term. I'm just going to say it like that. Second, what we've inherited, I believe, can either be acknowledged and accepted and worked through or, um, as humans sometimes do, we can look at what we've inherited and reject it and say, that's not, I didn't get us here, right? Like, that's not my thing. I didn't do it. Or I can't do it. Here are all the reasons why we can't. I don't, I don't believe in that. I believe if you've inherited something, it doesn't matter how you got there. It's, I feel like I have an obligation to make things right, um, in whatever way I might be able to. The third thing I want to say is, um, in accepting this proposed order, it does by no, by no means does it mean that I accept state rulers or the structural constraints that are in place that ultimately do not serve students well. And the last thing I'll say is, um, parent choice for education does not exist if a state strangles public education.
Thank you, trustee Lugo. Trustee Sapata, I know you're on Zoom. Thank you for joining us. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Uh, sure. Well, I was just, uh, reflecting on when I came to my first board meeting as a new elected trustee and month after month after month after trust, after meeting after, board meeting after board meeting, so many parents coming complaining about spit and how the issues were so severe and it was just continuous. And it, I was appalled to hear that it was still so severe, even 33 years later, even when I was there at, on the other side as a parent with my son and my grandson. And so it's, our kids have suffered a lot and as trustee Lugo says, you know, even though we didn't create this problem, we're about making sure that every student has the best AISD education experience. They deserve it. And it's, as your trustees, this is what I feel we are all trying to do every day as we serve our community, our district, our families. I, I, I too am so honored to work with the, my colleagues, um, and you had, they have shared so much information and I hope that you, the community, understand what T A is requiring us to do, that this is, uh, not a joyride, but we have to find a bright side to this. And when I think of the, looking for a bright side, I think of all the babies at the school, at the schools and how, just how happy they are in school and all their laughter and joy because this is what it's about. It's about them. And we have to continue to do our best and, and we are all committed to continue to do our best to serve our students. But community, we also need you. We need you alongside us. We need you to, to work with us, to work with our campuses, to, to own this with us because it's going to take all of us to be successful. And we're going to be the best, the best to continue to improve and become even better, the best AISD experience here in Austin. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Does anybody else have anything to add? All right, well, I think my, my colleague said it all, so thank you all. Trustee Sapata, I think you, you ended us on a good note with this, which is we are AISD and we are going to do our best. Uh, and we're going to get through this. We will. I see Dr. Robinette, lady, you have been amazing. Um, I appreciate you so much. So at this time, having a motion, um, by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sapata to approve item 4.2, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, we see Sapata's is up two. Thank you. Those opposed? All right, the motion passes with eight in favor and one opposed. Thank you. So the motion passes. Deep breath. All right. Next we have, we still have one more vote. Um, the next is the Lone Star Governance and Timeline. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve item 4.1, Lone Star Governance and Timeline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, are there any questions or comments? All right. So having, um, a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sapata to approve item 4.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, um, that was eight. Those opposed? All right, the motion passes with eight in favor and one opposed. Um, so as shared earlier, the board's originally scheduled work session will not be held tonight and will be rescheduled for a later meeting. Uh, the, um, okay. The board had also tentatively scheduled another meeting for action on the T A plan for this Thursday, September 28th, in case additional time was needed, but thank goodness. Um, since the board has taken action tonight, we will cancel this Thursday's meeting. Um, so thank you all very much. Uh, we will now recess, uh, the open meeting at 8:39 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. So when we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the, the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you for joining us and have a good evening.